Good afternoon, everybody.
We've.
This time I'd like to call this a city council's special call meeting. City of El Campo, 318 East Jackson Street, El Campo. Here at the council chambers.
No, you just have your quorum.
All right, we're going to need to call the meeting to order. We've got a, we've got a quorum here. And at this time, we'll move into a public comment. This time, any person with city-related business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council in compliance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. The city council is limited to making a statement of specific factual information in response to the inquiry or reciting existing policy, but may not discuss, deliberate, or take any action on any item. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The issue may be placed on a future agenda for consideration. At this time, we have one request to speak before the El Campo City Council. Ms. Paula Bell Cole, if you could, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
My name is Paula Bell Cole. And I am, my question is, do we have a contingency plan here in El Campo for storm disasters for the next hurricane because this is hurricane season?
We have an emergency management plan that is adopted by the county, the city of Wharton, and the city of El Campo. It's actually, you can't see it right here. I don't know if the mayor can quite reach it. You know, and it, it has chapters on what to do in the event of an emergency. But there are definitely measures that will be taking place after this particular storm that we learned from this one. So, so there is a plan, but every storm's unique, as you know. And some of the issues we faced with this one were unique.
Yes, and this was just a category one.
Yeah.
So, what happens if two, if it's a two, or three, or four, or five?
Right.
You know, and you have that contingency plan. Is that available for the public?
It's on our website.
It's on the website, okay?
Yes, but it's quite thick and onerous.
That's.
I would love to reach out to you after this meeting, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, that'll be great.
Maybe we can work through some, some options going forward.
Okay, and then my other question is about cleanup. What are the plans for cleanup? And what are, you know, what, what is the city council doing about that?
I will be addressing that in my report in the second.
Okay, great. And is there like a group that will help with tree that fall down, those big trees and so forth?
Yes, ma'am, we'll, we'll address that in the second item.
Okay, those are my questions. And so, I thank you for letting me speak, and I look forward to the rest of the meeting.
Okay, we appreciate your concerns. Thank you.
Okay, I didn't hear that, the same, but it did come. I can't be coming up there, but I will take my time. What I want to address, my name is Gloria Harris.
Hi Gloria.
I'm Ms. Harris.
I live in District Two. What I wanted to address, I think the governor addressed, but I don't like the way he addressed it this afternoon. He addressed it with Center Point. About trimming these trees in the line?
Yes, ma'am.
How can we address it as a city council with AEP? Because that's who is in our area. Instead of addressing it with all of the companies, he only said Center Point. And he thinks Center Point should be trimming the trees that they haven't been doing close to the line, trim it earlier. But I want to know how can we make him not only address Center Point, address AEP and whatever other companies out there? Is there any way y'all can reach out to the governor?
Well, Ms. Harris, I honestly think, I'm just speaking on my behalf. I believe AEP has been doing a good job, you know, every summer, I believe. We've get a third-party company that they hire to come trim trees on some lines and stuff. And of course, the storm came early, you know, earlier than most storms. And I'm not, you know, saying that, I'm not taking anybody's sides here or anything, but, you know, AEP's doing the best that they can. And I think they, they've done a good job, to be honest with you, on my personal part.
Okay, that's your personal?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not saying that they haven't done a good job, but they could do better.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we lost too much power, and most of it was because the wires was up there in the trees.
In the trees, yes, ma'am.
And the trees was uprooted.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, some kind of way, we need to reach out to whoever is doing this area
Right.
to have them cut it off then.
Okay.
Because if somebody asked the other day, I said, "No, they're not going to do that." We didn't have electricity for five or six days. Are they going to go down on our bills? I said, "No." I didn't say no, you know what I said. They're going to go up. I said, "They'll go up before they go down."
Yes, ma'am.
But since they're going to go up and try to get their money, and at first, the governor had told them when we had to stop, "You can charge the customer." But now, on TV today, he is just addressing Center Point because it's in the Houston area.
Yes, ma'am.
We lost just as much power as the Houston area. All I'm saying is, these big electrical companies, all of them should do the same thing, be on the same page. I know they trim, but they could do a little better.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I'm saying.
Going to see who we can reach out to, Ms. Harris, and we'll follow up.
That's all I want y'all to do, see if you can reach out to anybody. Now, AEP was good.
Yes, ma'am.
But they could do better. We all can do better, whatever we start to do. I can do better.
All right.
Wouldn't our contact be me, Scotts?
Yes, yeah. We'll reach out to her.
Well, and we'll give you some follow-up, Ms. Harris. All right, moving on to item number four, agenda items. Item number one, Resolution R 2024-34, Extending the Local Disaster Declaration Due to the Impact of Hurricane Barrel.
Yep, Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Bustamante signed a disaster declaration last week, but this disaster declaration needs to be extended. If approved, this resolution will extend this disaster by 120 days. We ask that you do that as we begin to collect debris and finalize our recovery process.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve Resolution R 2024-34, Extending the Local Disaster Declaration Due to the Impact of Hurricane Barrel.
Got a motion on the floor by Mr. Hancock.
I second that.
Got a second by Councilman Cope Lince. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you all. Item number two, Barrel Response.
This is just a report by myself and Emergency Management Coordinator Jimmy George. We've retained Series Environmental to do debris cleanup like Ms. Cole referenced. Jimmy can give you some more information on what that's going to look like and when that's going to start.
Series is bringing in their equipment as we speak. We've got a permit from TCUQ to use part of the landfill, separate from what is being dumped out there now, due to FEMA requirements. So, they're bulldozing the small trees and brush right there and making a pad ready. They're going to start Wednesday morning, probably around 7:00 AM. They're going to start in the quadrant of the northeast, which was in this area. They work clockwise around.
District One.
District One.
District One, basically. It's going to be divided by North Mechanic and the railroad. And they work clockwise southeast, northwest, southwest, and northwest. Timeline, they can't say for sure how long it takes for a quadrant. They're going to come in, this will be called the first pass. And then, once the whole city has gone through the first pass, then they'll make a second pass. Meaning, people will have time to do some grooming and get the rest of the debris to the side. Now, all this is going to be basically natural vegetation, limbs and trees and stuff like that. If people have anything other than that, like household goods or anything that was damaged, that needs to be separated. And they can pick that up, but it's going to be separate from everything else. The only big drawback right now is, is that the people who live on North Warden Street, South Warden Street, North and South Mechanic, West Loop, and Palacios, or the second streets of Palacios, those are called state roads. They're FM roads and Highway 71. Per regulations by the state, the state's supposed to clean that up. Well, I've talked to the state engineer at Warden, and they were under the impression that all they do is move the debris out of the way and pick that up if it was blocked in the roadway. So, those streets are going to be, are going to be last due to the regulations and that we have to do some further things to get that done, like a health department's permit or whatever waiver stating that this is a hazard that needs to be picked up. And they will come and pick up on those roads. I guess regulations laws always have some kind of deal with that. But that's going, so 7:00 AM Wednesday morning, they're going to get started.
Yeah, they'll be making three passes, and the landfill is open this week from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Saturday, with a lunch break to allow our customers to come out there and dump any debris they may have. So that's how, we've also activated our contract with GMC, and that contract's $175,000 to monitor the debris. We have to do that to get the FEMA reimbursement. In my narrative, I misstated that the reimbursement was 90%. That is what it was during Winter Storm Yuri. It is actually 75%. So your out-of-pocket cost at max will be $168,750. This will come from your general fund reserves. Unfortunately, it was an emergency, and you have those fund reserves for that purpose. You have over $5 million in your fund reserves. So this is something we, we planned for, we prepared for, and we're going to be just fine on that side. If there are any amendments to these contracts, I will be bringing them back to you for you guys to approve. But we went ahead and authorized those contracts on an emergency basis. Other city operations are running as normal. Our wastewater treatment plant has been online. We were told there were rumors of boil notices. We never required boiling of water. Our water plants did just fine with this storm. Unfortunately, some did lose power, but we were able to manage. We're still waiting on the FEMA grant from 2022 for the $1.2 million for generators. And the, but as, as a result of this storm and before this storm, we're already working to get, to get contracts out to have backup generators and transfer switches. Series Environmental is one of them that, that could provide that service, and we have talked extensively with them. So look for that to come soon. There, there will be some relief coming in the area. The Air Force Base out of San Angelo, if I miss, if I'm misspeaking, misrepresenting this, please correct me.
We have a captain from the Air Force Base. He told me he was in Katrina, and they saw that there was a big need because people weren't getting anything. So, they loaded up 700 gallons of water and 900 pounds of perishable items. They're bringing them down here, should be here around 1:00. It's a civic center for us to distribute and try to get as much information out to as many people. Anybody who is in need of water and/or personal food items can come pick that up. Unfortunately, it's, it's a limited supply, and first come, first served. And hopefully, we get a lot of people who want to, to use this, these supplies. And so.
Chief, this, this is 1:00 tomorrow afternoon, correct?
Yes, sir.
The Hesett House is taking any unmet needs requests. They're processing that. We also are asking people to go to the iStat page and report their losses to FEMA so that they can get help. FEMA will be in the area.
FEMA, we're working with the Northside Center. I sent that information to the county, and it should be sent to FEMA to come out. And they got to first inspect whatever building. And hopefully, they, they look at the Northside Center and deem that it's appropriate. Then hopefully, FEMA will get here as sometime this week, maybe, and start taking claims and stuff like that, so people can get some relief.
What kind of things would FEMA cover for individuals?
I, I wish I could tell you for sure. I'm sure some things, most of it's going to be low-interest loans for property damage.
Structural damage?
Structural damage. It has been some issues, some things where they may take care of some of the costs when they were out of power, if there was any damage to any of their belongings or anything like that. I'm not real sure about tree or limb trimming and stuff like that. I haven't really looked at what FEMA has, can offer. We'll know more when, when they get here and get that information out to everybody, especially.
I was just wondering about situations where people were not able to clean up their yards, where they had a tree laying against their house or something?
Yeah.
And no capacity, no money, or whatever, to be able to get that taken care of.
I had a gentleman call, a Mr. Smith, and he had a crew that has been going around. And I've learned into one or two houses that have some issues that people cannot trim their tree or get the tree off their house or their belongings. So, they, I believe they're out there doing stuff to help out people. If there's anybody out there that is willing to go out and trim trees, if voluntarily, which most people can't afford to pay to cut up a large tree. And there was some significantly large trees. So.
We would encourage those people to go to Hesett House and file the unmet needs on the website so that we can get you resources that can hopefully help.
Right.
We, we've been working with them. The nonprofits are really going to step up here, we hope, and then work with people to get them through their recovery.
I have a question to clarify the North Wharton, South Wharton, Palacios, and Second Street. So the Series Environmental, their cost, did it include North Wharton, South Wharton, Second Street?
That's a good question. I, I'm not sure if it was in their bid or whatever it is. So I'll find that out.
If it's in their bid, is there any way to, I mean, is this all in an effort to, to, the logistics of why these streets have to be last? Is it simply to be able to be reimbursed?
It, yeah, it's, it's, it has a lot to do with the FEMA rules. There, it has to be a certain way, doing a certain, it's unfortunate that it has to be like this, but there, I guess there was some conflict in the past between how the state did things and all this stuff. And I'm sure most rules are generated from some kind of conflict or something abuses the situation. I hope it doesn't cause that much hardship for us, but we, I can, I can find out whatever information I can.
Well, I mean, if you could ballpark, and I can't hold you to it because you don't exactly know. But if you had to guess, you say, if I, you know, had a crystal ball, I could foresee seeing that we're going to have our third pass completed by which day?
They gave us 60 days for completion.
Yes.
From cradle to grave, yes.
Well, that's surprising. Good, surprisingly good.
Yeah, and that, and that also includes the chipping, where it's into a position where they can get, they can move it.
Well, I just don't want North Wharton, South Wharton, Second Street, Palacios Street to languish in bureaucracy.
I understand.
We hear you.
For the cost of a couple bucks, you know, if we had to forego FEMA reimbursement to get this stuff done?
I understand that.
Because you've got government people not wanting to.
You know, I will, I will reach out to the, the contract, the people I've talked to, and see if that is a possibility where we can do that, you know, faster than, than, than what, what, those would be the last ones to be done, unfortunately. I, we'll see what we can do.
So.
I'll go ahead.
So, just to tie on to what Councilman Hancock talked about, are you saying that there is an organization, an aid for people who, because I drove all over, first through District Two, which has lots of trees down, and I know, because I'm cutting my own tree and I'm 63, that age, resources, et cetera, is going to, you know, this, these three weeks that we're cleaning up. But some people aren't going to get it out there in that three weeks.
Hundred percent.
So is there, does each individual have to go and apply for something? Or is this something the city is going to do for the less fortunate? Or how does this work?
Well, when FEMA's here, they'll have a better idea of what's going on in the area. A strike force was sent out yesterday and today to look at the area, a recovery team, to see how bad it is and what the unmet needs are. And so the next step would be to formulate a plan. And I don't know if they discussed that at your emergency manager's meeting this morning or not.
There wasn't.
But the first step is to identify those needs so that a response can be made. And we know that there are volunteer organizations. Are there enough? I, I can't answer that right now.
I don't know if there's enough. I, that's why it's important that we keep in touch with Hesett House because they, they have means to get, maybe get some resources out here.
Well, I think it's very important that we stay in touch with them because we need to make sure, we've got a certain time period that we're dealing with here, and we got to make sure they have enough equipment and everything to do all this stuff in that timeframe. Because if we don't, then what are we up against?
I was wondering that same thing.
We got to make sure, we got to make sure that within that timeframe, there's going to be enough, enough equipment, enough people to do all this work. Because then what are we going to be up against if we do not get it in that timeframe?
That's a good point.
Series right now.
And I want to go along with what Councilman Barker said. You know, just because it's a state road or whatever, it all needs to be, get done at the same time. I don't know how we're going to go about it, but I think.
On that, it's going to be eight days per quad, 60 days for quadrants and three passes.
They're allowing a weekend between each two.
A week, a week per quadrant.
Yeah, so hopefully, you know, in a week's time, they got enough equipment and people here to do all that work.
Are we thinking they'll have enough equipment to make a first pass on all four of their quadrants in a reasonable amount of time?
They, they have, right now, they have five big, big vehicles that have grappling hooks. Well, grappling arms. And they'll, they'll send out, then they'll, they'll go through a quadrant, and then pick up and then, then move and then keep going. Each morning, they're supposed to give me a progress report. And so, after the first two progress reports, we'll see where we're working.
And when they take it out to the dump, can they burn it, or what do they have to do with it?
No, it's going to have to be chipped.
Yeah.
And what do they do with the chips?
They, they usually haul it off to some other place that maybe wants mulch or something.
They're not allowed to burn it?
FEMA doesn't want them.
Sell it.
They're going to sell those chips to a.
They what?
They're going to sell those chips to a company that's going to burn them to generate electricity, more than likely. Now, I can give you a list of five right now. Yeah, I can give you the.
Down in Rockport, after Harvey, the state had, or somebody had a great big box about the size of an 18-wheeler, that was some kind of a real efficient burn device that didn't produce much ash or smoke. They had it set up out in the middle of the interstate highway, escalate. And they were burning that stuff, and it was just a cynic being gone. But, but most of that stuff down there got burned, and so I was just curious.
I'm listening to, to everything, and it sounds to me like there's a lot of bureaucracy involved in this process. Sounds like we've got to wait till we find out this, or wait till we find out that. I mean, obviously, you have to see what the damage is so you can determine what's there. But FEMA's not going to be here for two weeks, essentially. They came in on Monday, they're going to be here next, you know, possibly Thursday or Friday. They've got to look at a building, get approval. To me, that's just silly. Why, why are we not proact, I'm not saying we is, maybe it is we, but why can't we be proactive with FEMA? And we know we have that office building, and we, or we have another facility. It's the same thing, we had to work something out with the landfill. We leased that land, why do we not have a staging area? I guess, in my business, I have to have a plan after a plan after a plan after a plan, and every contingency is in there. And whenever, whatever situation is, is triggered, that plan goes into place. Kyle, you can probably, you understand exactly where I'm going with this. It seems like, it seems like maybe we need to be a little more proactive and have our, have, knowing what we're going to have. Let's not wait on the government to do things. Let's be able to move forward. We've got everything in place. And also, I think that in our budget, we should be able to allocate $100,000, $200,000, $300,000 for this type of work, to like to go with Mayor Pro Tim Barker. If the state's not going to clean up the road, we should be able to go in there and clean the road. I think your arteries have to be cleared first. Like I said, I'm not sitting here going to point fingers and blame anyone. It just seems like we all, this is why government, this is why the government, whether it's city, county, state, or federal, take the beating that they get. They cause a lot of this themselves instead of just getting business done, getting things cleaned up, getting it worked out. Then we worry about the money. And I think this, I'm going to add, this is the one little positive I can say from this. We have a chance to clean up our town.
That's it.
So here is the opportunity to come in and do this. And I don't mind spending a little more money, even if it takes a little longer, to go ahead and get this, and you get a baseline. And then that will allow code enforcement and whatnot to do their part to, to build our community. And I think it will help us in the long term. I think us leading, I want to be a leader. I don't want to be a follower. I want us to be a leader when it comes to the city and saying, "This is how we're going to clean up our town in a disaster." Not wait for Washington to tell us how to do it.
Yep, I believe we need to move forward with that.
If I can make a comment about that, a couple of times through the years, I've suggested that we come up with a timeline in our contract with anybody that's got a high line in town to have those lines buried. Now, my thought is, I know that's an enormous expense, but I would personally be willing to see the city forego some of its income from those high lines and those utility companies to bury some, bury those lines. I'd be in favor of forcing the burial of any new line that's installed in town, and then come up with maybe a 30-year program where the AEP, say, or whoever else, cable companies that are dragging all these poles down, I'll have to maybe bury 3% of their line a year for the next 30 years. At least we start and we get there, and that's the end solution to all of this. And they can't trim trees enough because they trim the trees off to the side and in their right of way. But that doesn't take care of the trees that can fall into their right of way and knock down their power lines. But I think that that should be a major consideration when we're negotiating contracts with anybody that's got a high line around here.
One, one comment, is there, is there an avenue for us to possibly, you know, like you said, spend the money maybe upfront and then have to negotiate the other stuff later? I don't know. Is that an option?
Are you talking about with FEMA?
Like, no, I'm talking about with cleanup.
Yeah, we're dealing with federal funds, so the bureaucracy is going to be there.
It'll be there, but that's what I was wondering if we could pass that out there.
I mean, the difference of us doing it ourselves versus the federal government is hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Agreed, agreed.
And so that's why we are going through the process that we were, and it didn't take us as long because we had a plan. And we were lucky enough to know where we could put this thing. It wasn't hesitation, it wasn't two days of looking for a site. We found the site, we applied with TCUQ. They had no power in Houston, that's where we applied. Had to go to Dallas, and we got the approval. And for them to come in within a week from, from the beginning to the end is pretty efficient.
Sure.
In my book. And, and so you're right, we do need to address the corridors and the main arteries. And that's something we can talk about internally, how we can get that done more efficiently, whether we do it ourselves or whether we can.
Well, and honestly, I did not know that was the, the case.
I don't think any of us knew that.
You know.
And, and then guess we can, can look into that contract and see about them corridors there?
Yeah.
See, see what the deal is.
Yeah, we can, we will for sure follow up on that one.
Do we have any figures on how many connections WCEC has in El Campo versus AEP? I mean, WCEC had the power back on in my house in eight hours.
Yeah. It was 33 for mine.
All the rest of the service they had in El Campo. also came back on in eight hours.
It was thirty-three hours from mine, and I, I, I don't live that far from you.
From W C E C?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, A E P on Friday had less than five customers, and W C E C had almost a thousand, but they were dealing with the more rural population, so it, it's really hard for us to, to, to compare.
Twenty percent, it's not very far.
Kind of apples and oranges there.
That's it.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
You mentioned generators, I, I wasn't on council. We, we have a generator at the water tower over here, and then we have a generator at the wastewater treatment plant, which I know it is successfully operated after we deployed that previously. So what other generators are you talking about?
We have applied, Kevin, for the generators at the water plants and, uh, portable generators for the lift stations, and that's what we're waiting on. Instead of us spending one point two million, we're asking for the federal. And that government left Tito, that, that grant left Tito's desk and made it to FEMA's desk in twenty twenty-two, and it has been sitting there ever since.
And I guess, I guess our emergency services center has a fixed generator that takes care of the whole thing.
That's correct, all of our, yes, and our new lift stations, including the one at W C E C, our most recent one, any after two thousand and seven, are equipped with transfer switch for portable generators. Um, so, that's in our design standards, it's something we're doing throughout.
So we'll own the, we will have standby fixed generators along with, uh, mobile?
Yes.
Okay. That was the, the challenge before. They've already paid for themselves, 'cause we didn't have them for years.
No.
When I was on council at first, I couldn't believe that. At least if you have water, then you don't have to be, one, producing, so you don't have to boil, and same thing with the wastewater.
And so everything worked fine at the emergency services center and all their communications and everything?
Yeah.
Well, you lost internet.
The only issues that we had were, like everybody, cell phone issues. Our great police radios, fire emergency, they did good. Now, uh, we're, we, we're on a system that's run technically by Harris County, but it's a shared system, and there were some problems in, in Warden, uh, but not major, there were intermittent problems. During the height of the storm, we had a few drops as we were doing, but, but that's not immediate either. But overall, we, we had no issues, uh, in our building performed well. Uh, we have minor damage, we have a few things there, wind blown damage, uh, and then city-wise, as far as law enforcement, the biggest, biggest issues, I think on that night, uh, I think EMS had to deliver two babies.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, uh, they, they were out and about and going, and, uh, it, I, I think, I also wanna just publicly say, there were so many people that came out helping, uh, on their own, feeding people, the linemen, uh, and, and it was just good to see that, that we saw a lot of that going on. Uh, we, we, in fact, there was so much that our officers were going around. Uh, at one point, we had so much food that was being given that, that they were driving around, seeing people on the streets, working on their yards and saying, hey, y'all, y'all need anything? And we were giving that on an ad hoc basis because there was so much generosity in town, so.
It'd be great, it'd be good to see a write-up on that. If who was gi- who was giving what and distributing everything, that's wonderful.
Yeah, it was, it was very, uh, for me, uh, it showed, you know, and everybody was out within the next day, working. You saw it all over town, uh, and, and again, uh, I think it was good. Law enforcement-wise, we, you know, our calls actually were down, you know, so that's always good. Uh, you see some places where they have problems with looting and all that, we had no issues on that. Uh, and so, so from the law enforcement side of it, I think it was, it was, it was terrible to see, you know, people lose property, luckily we didn't lose any lives and, and everything functioned on the, on the emergency services side. Uh, and then, like you said, there's still some things that, in the aftermath, that, uh, are gonna be lingering for a while, and we can all learn from that. Again, and then the thing too is, as I mentioned before, is all these structures and buildings and, and it's, it's a constant upkeep for generators and things of that nature, but, uh, I think it's, it's a very good investment. I think, um, Ward made that comment that, it, on the front side, it looks horrible 'cause they're so expensive and it is, it's a lot of upkeep with them, but when it goes bad, it's not bad than just sitting there going, hey, electricity's working.
Right.
And Courtney, will the dump continue to stay open?
We, right now, we only have it through this week. We're gonna monitor activity for the rest of the week. We can look at leaving it open longer.
If it's gonna take four, if it's gonna take four weeks or more, some people are gonna still wanna load up their own stuff.
Yeah, I hear you.
Holler out there.
I hear you, so we'll report back on that one.
And, and you will have people doing that, so I, I honestly think that the dump's gonna need to be open, you know, for a few more weeks, so.
We can do that.
Yep.
That's all I have, Mayor.
One more question. What are y'all gonna do with the people that's not coming to see about their property? You have a lot of people that live out of town. I got one on Palacios Street, two trees covering a house, they don't know nothing about it. Okay, I got one falling down Rock Street, the guy's out of the country, he knows all his house, trees all down. So what are we gonna do with these people? And it's people that we probably have been targeting, not targeting, but been after to do someone's property anyway.
Yeah, if you know of those people, Ms. Harris, give me a list, and, and we will make sure that we attempt to, we will, uh, try to contact them. We'll, we will make efforts, if, if they don't get back with us, we'll continue to reach out to them.
'Cause I do know, one lady, I know that she don't know that two trees is almost covering her whole house, can't see her house.
I'd like to add one more thing.
Okay.
Uh, we did have the volunteer firefighters, uh, were out, uh, they manned the station, and, uh, went to multiple calls at the height of the storm and, uh, made one rescue. Uh, every gentleman, uh, had his, uh, tree falling on his house, and, uh, and we were able to get him out without any injury, so. They did good.
Good job.
Thank you, Jimmy, and thanks to the volunteers for their efforts. All right, that's all.
All right, uh, this time, six oh eight PM, this meeting's adjourned.